Item B, of course. That's the student dress, dress uniform, second reading. I know this is Reverend Collins' policy he's been working on for some time, but however, I do know of the importance of dressing the dress code versus students and staff likewise, which is important that we have a clean, effective policy. But however, I still feel that that policy needs some additional work, some additional cleaning up. And before we even enter into a second reading, Reverend Collins, if it's all right with you, I would ask that we pull that policy today, send it back to committee to have it reviewed a little further.
Okay, we've got you.
And to clean it up a little bit more.
Yeah, we're gonna clean this. It might be ready by next meeting, but if not, we'll be ready by the next committee meeting.
Okay, alright. So you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Alright, great.
Okay, so we'll, it's to approve the agenda with one change, 3C being moved to right after public comments and then separately, per Reverend Mack's, removing the dress code from consideration.
Second.
Alright.
To be placed on the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So the next committee hold meeting, by time that gives us a little bit more time to have some more dialogue as well.
Alright.
Next committee hold meeting.
Alright. While we vote on that, the next item up is public comment. We've got two people here to speak, Kat Martin and Kathy Moore. If you'll please come up. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kat Martin, and I'm here in regards to the proposed updates to the student dress code and uniform policy. I am a parent of a CCSD child, my son is in first grade, and we have had no challenges with dress code ourselves. However, it came to my attention that this is not the case for many families in our district, and I'm very concerned. Last week, I asked families and educators to share stories about their challenges with dress code at CCSD schools. I received many submissions expressing concern about bias in dress code and discrimination in enforcement from both parents and teachers. I compiled over fifty statements in just a few days and sent them to you today via email. I am here to ask you to please read them and consider the impact of the existing policy on students. The proposed changes from the reading today, now rescheduled, will add additional restrictions and will further discriminate against students, specifically girls, students of color, low-income families, and children with sensory challenges and developmental delays. In the district, if the district-wide dress code does not protect the learning and safety of all students, then it is not fulfilling its purpose. The policy is lacking equity and consideration for students with different body shapes and sizes, options for families with limited financial means, and protections for students of all genders and races from punitive and shaming enforcement. The proposed policy changes also imply that our children's bodies are a distraction and not students in their own right. Data and the stories I collected show that this type of policy is most often enforced against girls, restricting their learning time, creating anxiety, and inflicting shame. This is discrimination and is the basis of rape culture. No student, male or female, is responsible for the actions or achievements of another. These policies and their enforcement are discriminatory and dangerous. I ask you to work with me and other students, parents, and educators to craft a CCSD dress code policy that protects, rather than punishes, our students and their education. We have an opportunity to create effective policy that will improve the education of all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kathy Moore.
Hi, my name is Kathy Moore, and I have a thirteen-year-old boy, or thirteen-year-old girl and a sixteen-year-old boy in the Charleston County Schools. Like Kat, my son has no trouble at all. My thirteen-year-old daughter and I struggle on a regular basis to meet the dress code policy. When I left for work this morning, I didn't give a second thought to my clothes, but when I saw the agenda for today's committee meeting, I knew I needed to come and participate in the public comments. I thought about what I was wearing, a wide-neck sweater that my bra strap peaks out of, distressed jeans. I am a forensic scientist, I have a good job, this is typical of what I wear to work. My daughter has no such luxury. She can't choose her workplace. She's a thirteen-year-old in the Charleston County Schools. She has been dress coded, her female friends have been dress coded, the boys in her class have not. While other schools in the country move forward, CCSD seeks to move backwards with a more restrictive dress code. Our current code is sexist, and the proposal to change it makes it only more so, more restrictive. Girls are dress coded more often than boys, and children of color are dress coded more often than white students. Girls and students of color lose significantly more class time due to dress code violations. The message, girls' education, is less important than their appearance. Girls' bodies are a distraction and shameful. Girls' bodies should be covered so that boys can learn. Boys cannot be responsible for their own behavior. If it is girls' responsibility to keep from tempting boys, girls then become guilty of co-conspiring in their own sexual assault, and sexual assault never becomes forbidden. The lack of faith in male capacity to be responsible means that we fail to teach and expect responsibility from boys. In closing, I'd like to just say from Title IX, that it says, "No person in the US should be, shall be, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, or be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item up is the CCSD partnership with Meeting Street Schools' proposals for Brentwood.
Mr. Garrett, I think we're still waiting for the vote. Ms. Darby?
Sorry.
Yes, he is.
Did he vote yes?
Yes, he did.
Sorry about that.
Alright, we're good.
Okay, the next item up is the CCSD partnership with Meeting Street Schools. It was in your packet. What questions does anybody have on that?
Just a minute. Can I go ahead and just move for approval and get a second, and then we can ask questions?
Okay, discussion.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Meeting Street or Liberty Field?
Meeting Street.
Okay.
Meeting Street.
Yes, sir.
How does their MAP scores compare? When I looked at it, it was like average. What is that map for the public, where are their MAP scores reading right now?
So in your packet, there was some information about their scores. I think, Stephen, you may have the PowerPoint to put on the screen so everyone could see. And it started with slides showing that their achievement is higher than schools that have eighty percent plus poverty. It's somewhat higher in English Language Arts. It's the other one, Stephen, thank you. It's somewhat higher in, excuse me, it's the other PowerPoint. It's somewhat higher in English Language Arts, and it's off-the-charts higher in mathematics. And in your board materials, that would have shown up on slides, starting five, six, seven, eight, nine. If Meeting Street has the highest growth in the district in mathematics, fifty percent of the children at Meeting Street meet, fifty percent of the children at Meeting Street are on grade level, and none of the other, yeah, next slide, Stephen, if you would, go one more. That shows in mathematics where Meeting Street students are scoring compared to other students, and that's on SC Ready. We see the same kinds of trend results. If you back up now, one slide, that shows the reading that they're slightly above. You back up one more slide, that shows the readiness when students come in. So when we look at the, every measure we have, Meeting Street students are scoring better than students in similar eighty percent plus poverty schools.
So there, I remember we had this discussion a couple of months ago, about a month ago. Many Hughes is also compared close to them, or either at, right at the same level, correct?
I don't know offhand. We compared District Four schools.
Within the District Four schools.
Right.
Yeah, but I know many Hughes is right there with them. Okay, thank you.
Alright, Reverend Collins?
So this is only comparing to North Charleston schools only?
It's compared to North Charleston schools, and Stephen, if you'll advance two more slides, please. Right, they're the eighty percent plus poverty schools in North Charleston, and that shows the mathematics achievement, which is extraordinary.
So how do we, we know a lot of schools in District Four are struggling. So how are they comparing to West Ashley schools, elementary schools in West Ashley and downtown in my place, which would give us a better picture?
We could.
And we've seen those in the past.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what they're today, though, but.
If you'll, let's see, Stephen, let's see, one, two. Would you please go to Slide Three? Alright, alright, those show all of the elementary schools in the district. If you lump together, reading and math, the red shows the percent of poverty in the school, and the blue on the top, the red on the bottom, shows the percentage of poverty. The blue on the top shows achievement. If you'd advance one more slide, please. The yellow arrows point to Meeting Street. So you can see across the district, Meeting Street takes more children in poverty and brings them to higher levels of achievement. If you go one more slide, please. This lists all the eighty percent plus poverty schools across the district, and it shows the numbers of children who were eligible to be considered to go to Buist at the seventy-fifth percentile and higher, and Meeting Street is the only one that has anything like forty-eight students that score at the seventy-fifth percentile or higher in both reading and math map.
Alright, so let me finish, let me ask you a question. Would Meeting Street then, would it answer to become a middle school, or would it just be elementary school that goes up to eighth grade? What would it be exactly?
It would be a K-8 school.
So it'd still be elementary school?
No. I'm not sure if you call it an elementary school, it's a K-8 school. I'm not sure how, I don't know who needs to classify these things or how it would be classified. We tend to just say it's a K-8 school.
So it wouldn't be considered a true middle school, is what I'm asking you?
No, sir.
Or a standard little middle school. So I know the office school facilities, if you have a middle school, you have a certain requirements for the building, and I think, I think Brentwood used to be a middle school. I remember serving, I think that was Jimnas, I believe. So I was trying to see where we're looking at, a separate middle school or just a simple K-8 program?
No, sir, a K-8 program on their, using their current campuses.
And about how many students, talking about adding next year, talking about next, how many students to add next year, would you have a mind?
It would be the number of sixth graders that are moving up from both Burns and Brentwood. Mr. Burrow, do you remember the number? We looked at those the other day, something like two hundred sticks in my mind, but I can't remember. It may not be that many.
It'd be, I don't think it'd be that many, I don't think.
I think that might be all, when it's totally built out with all three grades, it seems like it was two hundred sixty-four. I can't recall, Reverend Collins.
Two teachers every classroom, still?
They would continue with their model.
Alright.
Okay, Ms. Darby, go ahead.
Just, somebody asked me this, and I didn't know the answer. Is this gonna cost us anything additional than what if the students were going to a different middle school?
Yeah.
So it will not cost us more than it would if students, so we pay a certain amount for our middle schools, for all of our children at every school, and we have a memorandum of understanding with Meeting Street. The memorandum of understanding at Meeting Street, Brentwood, says that we pay them the average of what we spend on students in similarly situated schools, from which the Meeting Street attendance zone at Brentwood was carved.
And then they, Meeting Street puts in additional funding to fund the two teachers in the classroom?
Yes.
But can you clarify that point, because my understanding that all the teacher salaries come out of our budget, not theirs. Let's clarify that to make sure that they're actually paying the teachers. I never heard that. Because I've always been told that we pay for all the teachers at Meeting Street, everyone, we pay for every teacher, every employee, that we pay for.
We have a, the board has a memorandum of understanding with Meeting Street that says, if, for example, we're spending ten thousand dollars per student in our schools, and Meeting Street has five students, they get five times ten, or fifty thousand dollars. Meeting Street then hires the teachers and pays the teachers.
How did the money take it from us, right?
Yes.
And the money they put in.
And Mr. Holland?
Question, two things. Kate brought up a good topic, but how do we compare to, how does Meeting Street compare to state scores?
So in the, in the South Carolina Ready scores that we showed you, those are the state scores.
Those are the state scores?
Those, right, those are state scores, that fifty percent, more than fifty, a little over fifty percent of their children are scoring at or above grade level in, on the mathematics portion of the test. They aren't scoring so high on the ELA. They're still higher than our comparable schools, but they're not as outstandingly high as in mathematics. Those are the state scores.
And then the other thing is, I'm curious, Kate brought up a good topic. I want to see the outlay of district money going into Meeting Street and what they actually contribute into the pot, so I can just, you know, know for myself when the people ask that question.
Those things are on our website now, we'll help you find them, so you can see exactly what goes to Meeting Street in our budget, and then Meeting Street on their.
When we give a budget time, we always talk about what we contribute, but we never see what they contribute to the pot.
On their budget, on Meeting Street's financials, on their audit report, you will see the total that's spent on students, and so it's really easy to figure out the difference.
Thank you.
We'll help you, we're happy to help you find that.
Okay, going around the horn, Ms. Jeffrey, Ms. Green?
Reverend Mack?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, alright, if you could please, we've got a motion and a second. If you could please cast your votes.
Dr. Postlethwaite, has there been any parent feedback concerning the student schools?
How do you vote? Okay.
Any parent feedback?
Thank you.
There were several parents who want to come and speak in support of this proposal, and we explained to them that if they want to come and speak in support, that they would have to miss work today. We explained to them they would have the opportunity to come at the regular February board meeting. But there are, as we understand it, many parents asking about whether or not their fifth graders, or their sixth graders can continue at Meeting Street, so.
So you feel you got some support for it?
I know that the majority of parents support it. I'm not saying that all, I don't, I don't have any idea whether one hundred percent do.
Thank you.
Alright, the next item up is 3A.
Who are we waiting on?
Alright, the next item up is 3A, and Ms. Jeffrey, I'm remembering now to turn this over, turn it over to you if you'll.
Okay, focus on student achievement, program impact report.
A move for approval.
Read, oh, look.
Please, not too loud, not too loud, please.
Which other name?
Program impact report.
Action, we got to have a different action. Which one are we on? We went back to A, I'm sorry.
That's cool, and then.
Yep, we got him out of scenes, alright.
Here, you asked us each time to bring back a focus on student achievement. The Learning Services team is here at the table and ready to report on an aspect of student achievement that's related to the software that we use with, yeah, the devices that kids have. So I'm not sure who's gonna kick off.
I will, but can you advance?
One more. There you go.
And would each of you state your names, because I'm still working.
And what would help is what do you do in the district, too, right? Wouldn't that help?
Yeah. Do you want to start? I'm Carolyn Belt from the new chief academic office. Jennifer Coker, Alternative Programming Services.
Emily Woody, Curriculum and Instruction.
Robin Jones, Instructional Programs.
Buffy Roberts, Assessment and Evaluation.
Michelle Simmons, Elementary Learning Community.
Okay, so good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Reverend Mack, Ms. Vice Chair Darby, Board of Trustees, members, and Superintendent Postaway. We appreciate you providing time for us today to share our program impact report on student achievement as it relates to digital content being offered in our district. We provided a copy of the program impact report in your board docs, but we also wanted to take some time now to just sort of go through those individual programs, outline and discuss the overall outcomes we were able to establish based on our available data. You'll find one of three descriptors on the slides, a green dot, a yellow dot, or a red dot. The green dot represents what would be considered positive trends of effectiveness. The yellow dot indicates that there is some evidence of a positive trend of effectiveness, but the data may not be as robust. The red dot indicates limited or no evidence to verify a positive trend of effectiveness. Okay? Alright, so we'll start out with Achieve 3000. We used data over two years from the program, as well as from our MAP reading assessment, in order to determine if a correlation of usage and achievement translated into learning gains on the MAP assessment. What we found in this study was that Achieve 3000 has been widely implemented across time and shows Lexile gains over time. We also found that average activities completed in Achieve 3000 may not be a good indicator or predictor of student learning gains on the MAP reading assessment, but average Lexile increases observed in the Achieve program do somewhat translate into MAP learning gains. Though Lexile increases in Achieve 3000 and MAP reading do somewhat correlate or align, because there's not a moderate to strong correlation, and because there's a lack of correlation between increased activities completed in the program, as well as those MAP learning gains, the program receives an effectiveness rating of yellow. Recommended next steps would be to continue to work with the vendor to customize reporting features to better support the use of data to impact student learning, design professional development to maximize Lexile gains, to provide monthly updates on growth data, as well as implementation progress, to school leaders and district leaders, and to continue to collaborate with instructional coaches and school leaders on implementation.
So one question, can we go back just one slide to the reading slide, if that's okay? So one question I think we have, as we look at our reading program, is Achieve 3000 was intended to be a supplement to enhance or as an intervention to give kids a couple of different options. One, for content, to have it at multiple levels so they could still learn science or social studies content, depending on their reading levels. And then, most importantly, for increasing the Lexile level of students' reading. So Lexile level is a measure of the complexity of the text. The more dense a book is, the more high-level vocabulary, the more that it has higher-level literature, literature features to it, like alliteration or symbolism, the more complex it is. So one of the challenges is that right now, I think, we might be over utilizing it as the primary instructional material to actually increase reading fluency and comprehension, rather than making sure that kids are getting exposed to grade-level text and really getting stretched to actually accommodate that. So I think one of the opportunities of this study is to make sure that we're going back to schools and ensuring that they're using this as a support and a strategic support around a clear function that the school needs and the students need, versus using it quite as widespread as it's been used without that clarity of the why.
Go ahead, Stephen. Alright, for Alex, we used data over two years from the program, as well as from our MAP math assessment, in order to determine if a correlation of usage and achievement in the program translated into growth on MAP math. Overall, the program is being used in more schools over the past two years with consistent mastery of standards. This may provide some evidence that the program is being used more effectively over time or in different ways, potentially even with specific learners. Analysis of the relationship between the total time spent in Alex and school-wide growth on MAP math assessment showed some weak correlations, indicating that these variables are likely not related. The quality of usage, or the ways in which students engage in the program, may actually be a better predictor of learning gains. In other words, it's not how much time students are actually spending in the program, but how they are engaging in the program during the time that they're spending that really makes the most impact. Increases in progress and standards mastered by students within the Alex system generally align with gains that we see in MAP growth data. This data actually led to an effectiveness rating of green, because if quality student engagement in the program is observed, as measured by the progress in standards mastery in Alex, then the growth on the MAP math is likely to be observed as well, so it's a match. Our next steps for this program is to consist of continued professional development to support data-driven decision-making for student instruction, to support the Alex program data usage for flexible student grouping, as well as for lesson planning, and we'll also continue to monitor implementation in the program to determine its continued effectiveness. The analysis conducted using Dreambox, Dreambox usage and achievement data and MAP achievement data suggests that time using the Dreambox program and lessons completed in the program are not necessarily good predictors of student learning gains on the MAP math assessment. However, again, demonstration of mastery in the Dreambox system may be a better predictor of MAP learning gains. In other words, if growth in standards mastered in Dreambox is observed, we'll likely see the same thing in our MAP math data. Overall, Dreambox is widely implemented with fidelity, and program usage and student learning in the program is relatively consistent. The program does show promising results, but because there were some dips noted from 2017 to eighteen, to eighteen to nineteen, in usage as well as percent growth per student, the effectiveness level was placed at yellow, as we'll want to review this, the same kind of information at the end of the year. It's also important to note the decline in usage that we noted in 2018, nineteen, could be attributed to additional grade-level access of Alex in grades three through five, so it's a competition of the digital content. Dreambox aligns really well with the emphasis on conceptual understanding over procedural learning. This emphasis on conceptual understanding aligns with the math curriculum seen in Bridges, as well as in our O-GAP strategies. So as this framework is more widely and effectively implemented over time, we may see increased usage, as well as gains in achievement in the future, within Dreambox and MAP math. Our next steps, or recommended steps, would be to evaluate the new predictive insights feature that Dreambox is offering. This allows us a way to predict student performance on interview assessments, so we plan to revisit that and look at what this new feature looks like and whether it's accurate. Provide professional development, targeting effective use of the program, including creating assignments to align with student needs, as well as progress monitoring student growth and proficiency. Continue to work with a cohort of teachers and coaches that are participating in a train-to-trainer model, so that we can bring best practices to scale, and we want to provide support in teacher dashboard usage within the Dreambox system. Although I-Ready has been in the district for a couple of years, it has only been implemented widely in the district for this current school year. For this reason, it was impossible to examine learning gains on standardized assessments for schools using the program, so we did not provide an effectiveness rating for I-Ready, but only provided the use of data. In terms of 2019 program usage, I-Ready is currently being used to support reading instruction in twenty schools with 5,567 students approximately, and math instruction in five schools with approximately 665 students. It's important to note that sixteen of the eighteen elementary schools that selected I-Ready for the 1920 school year chose to implement it in third through fifth grade in reading as an alternative to Lexia. Most middle schools have actually opted to transition to other adaptive digital content titles for reading and math, such as Achieve 3000 and Alex, over the past two years. A common reason provided for this shift is that although content is appropriate for grade levels, some of the graphics and characters that are found in I-Ready may present as a little too young for middle school students. Two middle schools actually still continue to use I-Ready, but only for reading or ELA. Our next steps would include continued monitoring of usage and impact on student achievement and performance, so we'll revisit this one.
May I ask a question? So you've done all those, or no?
I have two more.
I just clicked off the sheet, I apologize.
Sorry.
The red ones.
Alright, I'll wait.
Overall, the analysis of Lexia usage and achievement data and MAP reading data suggests that Lexia usage and mastery of grade-level content in Lexia are not good predictors of student learning gains on the MAP reading assessment. Additionally, Lexia is not being widely implemented or implemented with fidelity within the district. For all these reasons, Lexia was assigned an effectiveness rating of red. For all these reasons, Lexia was assigned an effectiveness rating of red. Next steps for the current year will be to continue to work on implementation practice, provide professional development, monitor program results, and then reevaluate and determine an implementation plan at the end of the year. And the last one, No Red Ink. For this analysis, we actually examined change in median SC Ready and, and of course, assessment text-dependent analysis data or the writing scores over two years to identify if No Red Ink usage actually impacted school-wide writing scores. Implementation has been consistent over the past two years. Among the 20 schools that had SC Ready TDA data, 18 showed no improvement in median TDA score and two showed a slight decline. This analysis does not provide evidence that No Red Ink is improving student writing scores as measured by the writings portion of SC Ready. Among the 19 schools that had EOC text-dependent analysis data, six showed a decline in the median text-dependent analysis score from 2017 to 18 to 2018 to 19. Seven showed no change and six showed an increase. Additionally, average topics mastered per month was compared to changes in median TDA scores to see if No Red Ink usage was greater among the schools that had gains in writing scores, and results revealed that no evidence of No Red Ink usage impacting those increases on those writing scores. The current analysis over the 2017-18 and 18-19 school year suggests that No Red Ink does not necessarily positively impact SC Ready and EOC writing results. For this reason, it was assigned an effectiveness rating of red. However, it's important to note that this year, No Red Ink has actually released a new writing component that features writing and revising as well as a writing assessment that is more closely aligned to our South Carolina College and Career Ready writing standards. So, we would want to look at that and see what the results from this, this new development in No Red Ink would have. So, our next steps would be to work closely with No Red Ink in this writing assessment component, provide additional professional development in best practices for integration of No Red Ink in writing instruction to supplement, not to replace, and to revisit and reevaluate, reevaluate progress at the end of the year to determine an implementation plan.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question. So, with the, the end-of-the-year review of all these, are you going to come back and say do or don't fund these for next year or?
I think what we will do most likely is to work with the data that we have to make some recommendations for whether or not we'd want to, to implement those again. One of the things that we've discussed in Learning Service and Great Depth is really looking at streamlining what we're doing and maybe targeting some of this digital content for very specific purposes in grades. The implementation has not necessarily been as streamlined as, as maybe.
That's right. I mean, I think the headline here is if we're recommending the continuation of any Reds, we should be able to explain why, and it might be, for example, that there's something around the changes to the program. My sense is that this district has well-invested in adaptive digital content, has a lot of options, and the real challenge is really focusing in on what, when you use it and why for what particular learning need. So, I would say less is probably more over the long term. But I would also want to make sure that we don't make any changes that are too dramatic for particular schools who have an investment on the program, so there's got to be something that we're helping them bridge a gap, so.
I have a different kind of question. So, let's say we implemented a program, I don't know when Achieve 3000 came in, and we have professional development when it was implemented. Do we continue that because we get so much turnover in teachers and teachers moving to schools? Does that, is that a continuing thing? Or if you got trained two years ago, that's it?
No, actually, our innovation and digital learning specialist works with our coaches here, our coaches at schools to make sure there's ongoing training on that. And as a matter of fact, I know on the 14th, there may be some training, but that's an ongoing process.
Other questions?
Yeah. Now, you just said iReady was implemented a year for a year and didn't yield any results?
iReady had been in the district, however, it had not been used in any type of schoolwide or, I should say, widely implemented. So, it wasn't enough to even be able to determine if there had been any impact.
You wouldn't know what the cost of that program?
Ms. Johnson.
The cost from 1920 was $290,002.67.
$290,000?
$267.
$267,000?
Excuse me, $290,267. That's for this year.
$290 last year, $267.
That's for this year because, again, this year is when it's being widely implemented. So, now we're really looking at that data because it is being implemented widely so we can see what kind of progress or what kind of impact we get from it.
So, you're not able to say, but you said you're not able to determine if it was effective or not?
Not yet because we want to give, anytime you implement something, you want to at least, at least give it enough time to, for lack of a better term, take hold, so to speak. Because as we're, as we're working on professional development with teachers, when something is new that you're implementing, it takes time to, to first of all, learn how to implement the program and also to think about how you actually integrate that within your own instruction, especially if you're going to do it well and it be a supplement and not something that just is simply done to be, to be done, so to speak.
So, you want to see if these Dreambox or the Lexia or other programs combined would be able to yield a result that you're trying to achieve in measuring to do the achievement gap? Am I correct with that?
Not necessarily because I think some of these programs are used in some schools and so they're not, all of them are used in all schools. So, that's part of the challenge. Like, I do believe that we have some work to do to make sure that we're clear with schools on why particular programs are a good instructional choice. And I think the other thing is we need to clear out the noise and make sure the core instruction, so the basic teaching of reading and mathematics, that most of the instructional time is being spent on that, and things like iReady or Achieve 3000 or any of our adaptive technology are to support and enhance, but are not the core instruction.
So, you think that one program may be good in one particular area and then may not be good in the other area, correct?
That's right. So, something like Achieve 3000, for example, it, it essentially allows kids to do, to read different passages, and as they get more comfortable, the, the difficulty of the passage goes up over time, but there's no point where someone's actually teaching them how to do more complicated text. And so, in the absence of someone actually doing that work and some, there's work that can be done using Achieve 3000, so you can expose a child to a grade-level text and give them support, but that's a teacher teaching, not the tool. So, that's a big piece of this is to make sure that we're using it for the right reasons. And then, I think it has real merit for content area teachers, like a science teacher or a social studies teacher, because you can give exposure to content knowledge at multiple reading levels. So, that allows kids who are behind in their reading level to still have some exposure to new ideas in science or technology.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
How long have we had Alex? How long has that been in the minute here, Alex?
2017.
So, I'm looking at the P and Alex now, the overall standard of progress for last year. It was 21.1%. But with this year, if I'm reading right, it's only 13.2%. What caused the decline, even though we added four schools to it, it looks like?
One thing you'll have to remember is that, that last column that's showing on that Alex chart is only showing half a year or not even quite half a year, right? Because it was in December.
Right. So, you expect to see more gains by the end of the year?
That's what we hope.
Is Alex also expensive to run? Just roughly, just give me an idea.
$398,000.
$400,000. All right, so, I want to ask you a question.
Because it's being used in more grades.
This is just, this is kind of generic.
One of the things about Alex, too, is it's actually being used in more grade levels and more schools.
I see that, yeah. Look at all the schools, almost.
So, some of that can be a little bit misleading if you don't know exactly how many grades it's being used in or how many students are actually accessing the program. Because some of these, some of these digital content providers are actually, how should I say, applicable to, to many different grade levels.
Does Alex have the, the own-screen instructor that speaks to the children?
To children?
The tutorial, yeah.
Alex includes tutorials, but it really focuses on, on the individual students and they establish their foundation, their benchmark, and then they work through, I mean, to strengthen their, their understanding in each one of those different areas of mathematics. It could be third all the way through high school to support their understanding and to remediate if necessary.
So, just bear in mind, second longer, in the classroom, let's say students doing homework, taking quizzes, tests, whatever, you have, you have.
Definition of patient.
You have students that chronically continue to, say, out of 20 questions, they may get seven wrong in the classroom. This happens over a period of time. What intervention, is there any intervention at that point if a student misses, says seven out of 13 on average, seven out of 20 on average, they get wrong, let's say, in the same classroom? What's, what's that teacher's next step?
As far as when, do you think about how you might could use this type of digital content?
No, not necessarily. What I'm asking is, what would be the next step to reach that student if he's struggling? He's only getting 13 out of 20 correct. So, what would be the next step in the classroom?
There's nothing to replace good core teaching. I think that you can use, this is a good tool to use when you're like maybe doing differentiation for a small group, and maybe a teacher would need to focus on whatever that particular student's needs are. If there's students with similar needs, then you can work with those, but then this is a reinforcement, this is the practice to, to become, you know, to master that particular area, whatever. So, that would be a sign of reteaching maybe necessary.
So, are teachers mandated to, to do anything to reach the kids that are performing lower month after month or do they just continue on?
I'm getting the situational analysis of a specific what-if in a classroom on the single given day. And you're about five minutes in.
Okay, I'll stop. But then, just let me say this, I want.
But now you know who's.
I'm almost done. That's, I'll say one statement, I wrap it up. So, the reason I asked you this goes, in Charleston County School District, a lot of African-Americans, most African-American students overall are far behind the white students in math. We're struggling in math and we're trying to, I'm trying to get to the bottom of it. What is the intervention to, to address the, do we leave the kids there and continue going on to the next students or do we put something in place to catch those kids when we see they're constantly falling? That's really what I'm trying to get at.
Your point is well-taken. Like, the, the point, the kids are not going to learn unless they're actually taught the concept.
That's right.
The value of any of these tools is just to give us some insight into where kids are struggling, where's their misconception, what don't they understand about the topic? And if the teacher doesn't do anything differently based on that, then it's not so helpful. Now, there, as you know, in math, there's three big ideas here. Conceptual understanding, so understand that one object is one thing and number one, right? It's the fluency, so like the times tables, that we don't have to think about it, we just know it.
Yes.
A lot of the value-add is the fluency. Like, you, you get practice.
That's right.
And that allows the teacher to do more individualized work with other kids and build the fluency over time. It is not a substitute for conceptual understanding. And then, I think the last piece of that is real-world problems. So, trying to help kids understand, like, what does this matter? Like, when am I going to use this? And some of these adaptive technology, and I will admit, I don't have as much knowledge about Alex, but they do a good job of making connections to real world, like money when you're talking about decimals, right? Or looking at different visuals around fractions. So, that's useful in that they're getting practice, not just in the routine, but in the application. But, you know, a bottom line is, we agree, adaptive technology is not core curriculum, it's a support. And our job is to make sure that we use it as a support, and I think that's the next stage of this work.
Thank you. Are there any other?
Man, just adding one thing, too, and to think about the way you can use digital content, the data within that, these platforms, you can actually use to help you determine where those areas are that students need extra help. So, like, when you're thinking about flexible grouping and that and what types of skills to target for that particular student, so that is one way that digital content can help with that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Did that answer your question?
We start, yeah, we beginning.
I think we had a good conversation.
We just got to solve the problem why black children are struggling in math year after year. And that has changed.
Okay. Anything else? All right.
Thank you, y'all did a good job.
Graded, yes, thank you very much.
I approve the move of all eighth graders placed at Liberty Hill by due process hearing to Daniel Jenkins.
A second.
Question.
And now, open questions.
Okay, so now.
Reverend Collins, go ahead.
No, I guess I'll address this to you for Liberty Hill, Daniel Jenkins. You may talk a little bit about it briefly.
Thank you.
But my, my concern is that we're already dealing with children that have discipline issues to begin with. That's why, that's why they're at Daniel Jenkins, and most of them, that's why they're at Liberty Hill and they have some other disability. So, so the example that is set by older children, older boys, and then you have, I have a boy 18-years-old, I have a girl only 13-years-old on the same campus, this, this is not an environment where kids are excelling and knocking it out of the park, really growing academically, but we're talking about kids that are kind of struggling already and having problems, issues with behavior in adolescence and put them on the same campus. What I want, what I'm asking you to do this first before we vote on is that if you would have the parent engagement for the kids at Liberty Hill, those parents, if the parents get involved and see if they want their kids to be on the campus with the high school kids, if we can do that first, it gives them some consideration. That way, after the fact that it's done, we don't have to come back and say, well, you didn't tell us, we didn't have a chance, you're moving our kids here and there. You know, some of the confusion we've had in the past, let's try to avoid that. I'd like to see the parent engagement take place first. Even if we vote today, I want us to still include that we'll have the parent engagement to see if the parents support it.
Yes, sir. I will respond in two ways. First of all, we would love for you to come and visit both of those campuses. Our staff would like to arrange a visit for the board members. And secondly, I think you'll be delighted to know that the staff's already met with all the parents. Ms. Coker could say more about that, but all of the parents are in support of this move. And thirdly, when you go through a due process procedure, the parent has to be notified and have an opportunity to have input. So, I, I think that you'll be very pleased with the outcome.
You're saying all the parents support moving eighth graders to the high school?
Ms. Coker.
Yes, sir. Mr. Haynes is the best to answer this. He has worked with all of the parents at Liberty Hill.
I've met him before.
Mr. Williams also had, well, he can talk to specifically the comments and the parents. And then, Mr. Williams has also held some open house events at Daniel Jenkins.
Thank you, board members. I personally called every parent of our eighth grader. Took us a couple of days to get that done and spoke personally with every parent. They are excited about the opportunity for their children, the fact that they have a larger facility, the fact that they are going to be taking teachers with them from Liberty Hill to Daniel Jenkins, and the opportunities for them to possibly gain credits in high school credits as well as the grant program that Mr. Williams has in place that's going to give them opportunities over the summer to continue to gain at this level.
So, how many, how many students roughly?
I think it's 33 if I'm not mistaken, is the eighth grade, the eighth-grade students that we would be trying to send.
Most African-American?
Yes, sir.
And that number will continue to change. It was 31 when I put this in last week, but we, I mean, that number changes every week based on placement.
So, what if we get there and it doesn't, and it doesn't work out so well? Do we find the kids getting in more trouble, getting further behind, then what's the next step?
First, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Twain Williams. I'm the interim principal at Daniel Jenkins, and we will provide interventions. Some of the great things we're doing is we're looking at trauma skills schools and we're looking at social and emotional learning to provide supports for students. So, whatever isn't working, we're going to find strategies to give those students the support that they need. One example is, and when we talked to the students, they were so excited about the opportunity to have advanced credit. That will help them when they do go back to their home school because these are students who are already struggling. If they can even get a half-credit or a whole-credit and then go to their home school as a freshman with an advanced credit, that's going to help. The other concern is when students come to our campus, there are four communities within our school, and those communities are separate. So, the eighth graders will not have any interaction with the other students because they'll be in the yellow community, and they will have their breakfast there, and then they will transition to lunch at a separate time. So, we've done everything to make sure that there aren't any interactions. And then, we have enough staff on campus to make sure that if something does happen, we know about it right away to intervene before it becomes a problem.
You have an SRO also?
Yes, we do have an SRO.
And the other critical piece is that the teachers moving, the four core teachers are moving and one classified staff is moving, would move with, have agreed to move with the students, but also the PE teacher would come and teach PE to those students. It wouldn't be a change in teachers as well as the guidance counselor would. as well as the guidance counselor would be coming to Daniel Jenkins from Liberty Hill a couple of days a week to maintain those relationships. And we've already worked with mental health. If this change does happen, that that counselor could, could serve those students while we begin on the transition. So we would not want to just move them without their services that they're already getting and just have all new people working with them. So we have worked through that. If this, if this were to be approved, we would have all of those things in place.
Just lastly, I understand that you said they're a little excited, want to go and they're looking forward to it. But I don't want it to be that there's something we turn into a career for the students that a year later, they're still at the school. Or 18 months later, they're still there, they hadn't transitioned back. I do not want that at all. And I want it to be a smooth transition to get them out. But if it doesn't work, you need to let us know so we can get them out of there.
Yes, sir. So this moving now would give us the rest of this year to see how this works with our eighth graders in that environment. And we would, at the end of the year, bring back any success rates that we have for this and, and make a final decision for next year. We are hoping that we can improve on the amount of students restored to our schools. And so currently at Liberty Hill, seventh and eighth graders are all in one area. And so that's one of the challenges that we have in the building there. And so we feel like separating them at Daniel Jenkins in the one community by themselves will really allow us to support them in a better way. And we wouldn't bring this in the middle of the year if we hadn't thought and worked through it very thoughtfully, because this is a strange time to move students. We certainly agree.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else with a question? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
No, he's off.
Quick question.
The motion passed. Thank you very much.
Yeah, quick question, Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
The behavior population with the, I guess, mental health side, how does that interact between the two? And does that cause a problem? I'm just curious.
Are you referencing having the two different programs on site? So in both buildings, those programs are separated. The students are not in the same area for classes. They access some of the same services. Mental health counselors might work with both of them. But they're separate areas on each campus.
But when transportation, are they shared?
So all of our students with special needs have the option to be on special needs transportation if that team decides that that's what's most important for them on their transportation to and from school. So the majority of our students in the day treatment program are on specialized transportation.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. North Charleston High School requests for a local board waiver.
I make a motion that we move to approve Principal Darby's request to pilot test modification to the district progressive discipline plans.
Second. Is anyone, can we ask questions? Who do we ask questions about this? Or are we just going to ask you?
There was a lot of information in your packets. If anyone needs more information, we have.
Okay.
Folks who can answer?
Do it. Well, then we don't have anyone to ask, so.
I think you're ready to vote?
It goes to vote.
I mean, if you have a question, I'm sure somebody can answer it.
Okay, so I do have a question. There's a, because I did read it. And the three-day out of school suspension, and I think everyone already knows that I'm not in favor of out of school suspensions, because then kids are out, whereas if they were in a proper in-school suspension space, they would be hopefully getting their work done and monitored by an adult, whereas out, I'm not. I used to teach high school. Out is out. And you might be fooling around and not doing your work. So then you come back to school and you're behind academically because you were put out. So that's my only question. And I, and I see some people who work in North Charleston High School. I respect that, that Mr. Darby knows what's best for his school, but that's a question I have.
Can someone tell me what the, under the box, it says tardy or ID? It says seven, I guess seven means seven days?
Seven times.
Conditional suspension, parent must bring student back or re-admit. So are we saying, if you get seven tardies or seven times no ID, then the parent comes in?
Yes, sir. The student, the student goes home and then the parent comes back with the student.
Okay, so it doesn't say that the student goes home, so, but that's what you mean?
That, that's what that means.
So then you say that, and the student goes home. So actually, they'll be suspended, they'll be going home, wouldn't it?
That's why it says conditional suspension. If I send you home at 10 o'clock and you come back with your parent at noon.
Okay, so that's, so that's next, can that, that's one, that's limited to one day only? Whatever it means.
It says seven times.
Yes, how's it going? Good afternoon, board. Nathaniel Pearson, Assistant Principal at North Charleston High School.
Yes, sir.
I'm here for Mr. Darby, who's out right now on a STEM conference educational. So I brought with me Mr. Muhammad, Reverend Muhammad, as well as Mr. Ravenel.
All right.
To talk about, you know, combined intervention and everything we have in North Charleston High School. And then, what was the question?
Okay, when it says tardy or ID, and so, so it says seven times, I guess, conditional suspension.
Yes, they must return with a parent guardian in order to discuss.
So what I'm asking is, if they don't have the ID, it's the seventh offense.
Correct, yes.
Not having the ID, maybe, maybe had two, two offenses per month. But at the seventh time, you implement the suspension?
Correct.
Is that, is that limited to one day?
Yes.
So what?
So basically, if a student does not return to school with a parent, they are suspended for that term. Now, if they return to school with a parent, that's an intervention put in place where we discuss with the actual parent itself what's going on and how we can make sure that they're wearing their ID.
So I'm misunderstanding you. So you're saying that one day we're speaking about, right?
Correct, yes.
It's suspended that day conditionally. If the parent comes back to school that same day, they re-admit it?
Correct, yes, as we have that intervention at parent conference.
What if the parent comes to school the next day?
Then that's, that's fine. We meet with the parent and we discuss the actual.
They stay out till then?
They come out only for one day. Because again, we have to be mindful of the suspension, yes.
So one day regardless, I'm asking you.
Yes, so if they come out with a parent, then that meets that, that, that term right there, so.
So don't have the parent come back. You took the one day suspension.
Correct, yes.
Then you declared.
Yes.
Thank you.
So my question would be, what is the rationale for out of school suspension over in school? And I know Mr. Darby knows his school and you all know it, so.
Correct, yeah. So.
Is it more effective than an in-school, I guess?
It really depends on the student.
Okay.
Again, some, some students, ISS, that is a consequence, in fact, right there, where they don't want to spend there. Some people will, again, will cause issues in ISS, which will result in an out of school suspension. So, and again, a lot of our students, again, we only have about 5% of our students who truly are concerned in the school. And that's kind of why we kind of, when we implement this plan, it is in to really address it and come up with a flexible plan that addresses really that, those 5% of students who just, we can give them what they want and they, and they won't respond to it. The others will conform along with it.
Okay, and I guess that's what I needed to know, numbers. Like, we're not talking about very many.
Yeah, I'm not talking about very, but yes.
Then I'm fine with this, thank you.
Speaking of numbers, can, do you have any data, I mean, you may not have brought this with you, related to, for instance, the number of severe disciplinary actions you have over the course of a year? And how does that compare with maybe some of the other high schools? Do you have any of that information with you? Because if you don't, I can.
I don't at this time, no.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Jennifer, please.
I can provide it. If you can tell me what specifically you're looking for, I can get it, I can get it to you.
Okay, all right, great.
I do have one suggestion of yours in mind, one of one for cutting class.
Correct, yes.
Or leaving, leaving class without permission.
Yes.
You probably can make it a little stricter than that, because I think if a student leaves class three times without permission, that's a serious issue, because you can't give a count for that child. You don't know about their safety. So maybe after the second time, maybe implement suspension and maybe bring the parent in, instead of waiting until the third time happened. I think two's enough, because you got to give a count for the kids and where they are for their own safety.
Correct.
Can't be kind of afford to have them do it three, four, and five times, but to be on a count of four.
I think. There's a parent's conference on the second.
Well, see right here, but see, but on the, on the third, on the third time, it's conditional suspension. But at that point, you've been leaving class that many times, you need to be dealt with before then, before you get to that third time. So something's wrong.
They have a combined intervention on the second day.
Which is combined intervention, which is.
In-school suspension and combined intervention.
Mr. Muhammad and Reverend Ravenel, who can kind of talk about that.
Yeah, call for the question.
Call the question.
You're asking for them to change, but the motion's already made. You can make, you can ask questions, but you know.
Well, I'm asking them if they're considering.
The motion's been made, call for the question.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not making a motion.
There's two men sitting here who are in the school constantly, and I'm assuming they were part of the team that.
Correct.
Recommended this, so I.
But you understand what I'm saying there, right?
Yes.
About the third time is a serious issue. But I have supported it, though.
Ms. Green, if you can, she'll vote here.
Thank you very much.
The problem.
And Reverend Collins?
Okay, let me get it up, I'm sorry.
That's the end of my session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
And the votes?
I got it.
All right, the next item up then is audit finance review. You saw in your packet the different items that were covered. What questions does anybody have? And these would have also been sent out to you last week regarding what's coming forward.
I'm voting on the election they are.
I'm just, I'm just a matter of.
They'll come forward individually at the next meeting.
I don't worry about this one. That's for next week?
Yeah. What was?
I can't hear you.
There was one that didn't come on for action because it needed further work.
The one with the $400,000 for the Mayor Ford School.
Oh, the head start?
Yeah. I don't see that on here, though. I don't see it on, unless I'm looking at the wrong thing. I don't see it on the list of, of action items that's coming forward.
Is it on fixed cost of ownership?
We approved, yes, the mission critical reserve.
Yeah.
So I'm just looking at budget update.
That, that's where it is. Funding for pre-K.
So is it in one of these other categories?
Yes, it is. If you look on our, it's not for voting right now, it'll come to the next meeting.
Okay, nevermind.
But if you go down the bulletin, on our committee meeting, it was at the top.
Right.
And on this, it was midway down, right there.
Okay. All right, so we aren't voting on it today, it's not a problem anyway?
Right.
Okay, all right. I just had some concerns about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Not about it, but as it relates to.
Early, early out funding.
The money that we're spending for Mission Critical, I just, yeah, that's my concern.
Got it.
The next item up is, that has been pulled, so following that, we've got public comments. There, there are no other ones. We've got upcoming meetings, our next meeting. Be one. February 24th. Time's still to be set. Here, no other business before us, we will adjourn.
No public comments from no one?
No, there are none, for Ms. Taylor.
Second.
Okay, sure.
Motion to adjourn, second, all in favor of I?
Aye.